All right, we're gonna get our meeting started. And Tim, if you will, do the invocation. And then Marshall, if you will, do the pledge to the legion. Let's all stand, please, as we do this.
It's good to see everyone here today at this time. Let's pray. How much kind and gracious Heavenly Father, we come to you today. Lord, we thank you and praise you for all the many blessings of life. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to conduct county business. Father, we pray that everything that we say and do today will be according to your precious will. And Lord, we pray that everything that we say and do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' most holy and precious name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I ask you to bear with me if I mess up anything today. I'm trying to do it. I can't have seat. My heart's messed up again. What did I do? Turn it off?
It's on.
You're on now. So I ask you to bear with me if I mess up today because of that. Motion to approve the agenda. Well, we gotta amend the agenda because we may need to change it to go into the work session. And also, we're gonna do the CAA today, CSA works, what we're gonna do on Thursday, so we won't have to have a Thursday meeting. Okay? All right, so I need to make a motion on that.
Second.
Need a second?
I will.
All right. Madam Clerk, do you hear that? We had a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. No oppositions. So approved 100 percent. We'll do CSA today, and we won't have a Thursday meeting. Everybody's smiling at that. They ain't gotta do that.
He's giving you the fist pump down here. Yes, he is.
Then a thumbs up on that. I knew I was gonna make 'em happy with that one. So anyway, all right, now on the consent agenda, is there any changes or amendments to that? It's, if I remember right, it was either eight or nine of them.
Nine.
Huh?
Nine.
Nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody got any changes to the consent agenda? I need a motion on that, please.
May Commissioner Way approve the consent agendas presented.
Sir.
Are we gonna approve it in a second? Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, Brian, will you come, please? We're gonna do the VDOT. What's that up there above it? What's that?
The last item on the consent agenda.
Okay, okay, we're good on that. Go ahead, Brian, I'm sorry, buddy.
No, you're good. Chairman Thompson, it's good to see you this month. It's been a few months since I've been back here, so thank y'all for having us.
Yeah, but we learned last, we learned last month when you was gone that you could be replaced, buddy.
I know, I know, just with a flick of a switch, right?
You need to be careful with that. Lisa's here and...
Let's not let that get out back to Salem, okay?
Okay, don't let that get to Salem, I'm with you.
Keep that here.
I'm smelling where you're cooking.
So, real quick, we got a short agenda here. Couple things, maintenance activities for the previous 30 days. 220, we had a void just south of Grassy Hill that we did a repair on, and then we did some flow fill, and we wound up having to come back and do some additional work. Thankfully, that didn't turn out to be any bigger of a deal we were concerned about. So that patch has been replaced, and we're continuing to monitor it. You can see on the surface treatment stuff, we had many roads that were completed, long list there for those. And then that's all done, as well as our plant mix done, so our paving schedule work for this year is done, other than maybe some patching minor potholes and things that we continue to do. Second page, down towards the bottom, we've got mowing that we started Friday. We did some litter pickup last week. We're starting on our primaries, and we're mowing this week and into November, so that'll be our final mowing for the year. 864 Old Faram Road, we've got a pipe replacement progress. That actually was completed just at the end of last week, and we're getting ready to surface treat it. They were either gonna do it yesterday or today, so that should be opened back up. Page three, completed safety studies. We have a big study that was done on Hardy Road that we are considering and likely are gonna go ahead and post the Franklin County side at 45 miles per hour, and we'll have a number of advisory signs. So there'll be a lot of activity on Hardy Road. The Bedford side's already posted at 45, so this will be consistent with that. We have a 35 zone near the post office up near Hardy, but otherwise, it'll be 45 pretty much from the roundabout all the way into Roanoke. And then, let's see, on Route 657, Crow Gap Road, if y'all familiar with it, it runs from Boons Mill Road, 684, over to 220. And we've had some concerns from some citizens about speeding. There's a segment that's posted on both ends, the Roanoke side as well as the Franklin side. The Roanoke, I mean, the Bedford side, the Franklin side, sorry, is posted at 25 miles per hour, up to a point where it's, it ends the surface treatment, and then it turns to gravel where it's unposted, and there's been some concern about that. We're gonna approach some of the citizens out there about doing some advisory signs and placing "not recommended for through traffic," "turn around here" kinda thing. We already have some signs that are posted that we don't maintain it during winter months. If you're familiar with it, it's a mountainous, curvy road, not recommended for through travel. But unfortunately, sometimes the, my daughter, in fact, she traveled it through following Apple, the Apple Maps, and she came across it, and she did it in my Honda Civic, and I can't believe you made it across it. But anyway, so it does get picked up, but we're gonna put some more advisory signs on there and try to limit the through traffic there. Let's see. Of course, our project status, we have the 220 work that's going on. You see a lot of activity with 618 and so forth, so. And then, let's see, Frontage Road, right there at Rocky Mount, we've got some milling that'll be taking place, and they'll be patching that. So that's really the conclusion of our report. Be glad to answer any questions you all might have.
Anybody got any questions for?
Yes. Brian, you and I just spoke briefly, just to get this on the record for the citizens, for purposes of the citizens. I am talking with Brian and VDOT, our colleagues there, about the intersection at 122 and Lake Mount there at TEP Trinity. That project has been submitted several times for smart scale, and it's not scoring as well as it needs to to get a grant award. So that curve there, we're continuing to have accidents there, the curves there, people are just getting rear-ended, and it's, I think it's getting worse because the traffic is picking up there. So Brian graciously agreed to kind of talk with me about that and see if there's any remedy in sight for that. And the other piece, just to get on the record, I'm continuing to work with VDOT on the issues down around the Smith Mountain Lake Community Park. I have been working on this since I came on the board six years ago, and there are, we've talked about traffic calming. I've been working aggressively with the citizens and the sheriff's office. And so Brian, just for your information, the sheriff and I are gonna talk in the spring. There's some type of device that he will have available to him, it's post-mounted, to help, I don't know if it's some kinda radar-inspired piece of equipment. But anyway, we continue to have problems there. I am, and Chris, you probably know more about this than anybody, I'm perplexed that we put, we've got a, you know, a community park down there that is so well-done, and it has great attendance, and we have not taken care of the traffic remediation that needs to occur, mostly speeding. People cannot walk through there. Brian knows, we've worked on this for years, and just because the traffic's picking up, the problems are becoming more exponential. So I'm really hoping that we can figure something out for the safety purposes, because it's right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am. And to that point, we've actually talked about traffic calming
Yeah.
in that area and so forth, so whatever county's desire.
Mr. Mitchell?
Brian, I just wanted to also go on the record, talking what you and I discussed earlier about on 220 there where y'all are doing the work, how far it's backing up, can be pretty dangerous backed up like on 220.
Yes, sir. I've talked to our construction division. I know that we have the right lane closure going southbound, and then we've got the goose dam traffic trying to merge in, and then shortly thereafter, the signal, you've got the left lane closure, so there's a lot of activity going on right there. If you'll just bear with us as we get through that. It's relatively short-term project, but we understand the backups, and I've heard from our employees as well, so we're aware of it, and we're talking to see if there's anything that we can do to try to make some adjustments.
All right, I think that's all. Anybody else got any questions for Brian? All right, Brian, we've got a presentation that we're gonna make, and I think you and Andy were gonna make that, Chief Pendleton. So if you've got something to say, or if you want Chief Pendleton to do it all, that's up to you all.
I'll give it to Mr. Pendleton, but honestly, we're just so proud of our employees for their contributions, and, you know, day-in, day-through, they give and they support our community in many ways, not just working for VDOT, but working for the citizens of Franklin County and our community, and this is just another way they went above and beyond, so I won't steal his thunder, but thank you. Thank you for the recognition.
Mr. Chairman, Board, it's not often that we get to come up here and do things like this. Unfortunately, in the day we live in today, it's people will get their phone out and take a picture. But I get to introduce you two gentlemen that actually possibly saved the lives the other day. So Mr. William Wren and Andrew Mitchell.
You fellows come on up here in the front, please.
Well, just a little backstory. On September 30th, we received a residential structure fire with subjects entrapped on the deck in the Glade Hill area of Franklin County. Upon arrival, it was found that all, all the people that were trapped were removed from that area before we got there. Due to that, Mr. Wren and Mr. Mitchell actually observed, the fire stopped, threw a ladder, actually got the victims off the porch that had no egress, and did phone 911. So with that being said, I got a couple letters here that I'd like to read. "Mr. Wren, on behalf of the Franklin County Board of Supervisors, I'm honored to extend our sincere appreciation..."
Both of these letters are the same that he's gonna read. I'm sorry, go ahead.
"For your heroic actions on September 30th, 2025. During the structure fire on Colonial Turnpike, your quick thinking and courage were instrumental in saving lives. Without hesitation, you assisted in placing a ladder to the deck where victims were trapped, and your decisive action made it possible for them to escape the flames and reach safety before the arrival of emergency responders. Your selfless and composure under pressure exemplify the high standards of community service and compassion. The Board of Supervisors commend your extraordinary bravery and your willingness to act without regard for your own safety and to protect others in the moment of need. Franklin County is proud to have citizens like you who embody the true spirit of service, courage, and humanity. Your actions serve as an inspiration to us all. With deep respect and gratitude, Chairman Ronnie Thompson."
Speech, speech.
Thank you. Y'all got anything you wanna say?
He hadn't even worked for me for a month. Less than two weeks.
So he's like, this is what I get.
Thank y'all here, appreciate you.
It's a good thing we got Mitchell spread out all over.
They're everywhere.
Steve, I looked out the window, out the door there a minute ago, and I seen that fire out there, and I thought you was waving at me for something. See that fire out there in the, in that fireplace? And I thought you was waving at me to stop, or that I had missed something.
Don't say that.
That's why I took my glasses off. So I might want to tell y'all where y'all laughing at me. You laugh at me every week, anyway, every month, so that's what I was laughing about while I go, when I dropped my glasses off. Thank you, folks, for what y'all did, and for your fast action, saving a life. We appreciate that more than you know, and that, that little letter of appreciation, that's not very much, but it's all we can do at this time, so we thank y'all a whole lot for your quick thinking and your actions there, and that the fire department could do that for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, your turn.
All right. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so you have a couple of presentations from, from me today, so we'll try and get through these. So for our financial report, this is gonna be as of September 30th, so a quarter through the fiscal year. So what we'd be looking at roughly, gonna depend on the tax, but 25 percent, that's, that's where we look. So when you look at a overall general fund picture, we're within that 25 percent range for those that are monthly. We're a little below that for our expenditures, so nothing of concern except the areas where we know are front-loaded in the beginning of the fiscal year, insurance payments and those type items, service contracts. So to graphically show that a little bit too, you can see the revenue's pretty consistent, very even. We'll show that a little bit further breakdown. So you can see, general property taxes are actually up from this time last year, and I'll talk about that. So what, what has happened is, if you remember, we had the delayed real estate tax collection date to June 23rd instead of June 5th. Well, what it appears has happened is that has spilled over into July and August, so that's why you see a higher real estate collection tax in the new fiscal year than you did last year. And so that's why your property taxes look, it's not, it's all within budget, but it looks a little bit, based on this point in time in the year, because of that, that later due date for real estate. Other local taxes are pretty, pretty even, less than a couple hundred thousand dollars difference on those. Our state revenue is, is up relatively, or down, excuse me, compared to last year, but that is related to CSA. Of course, we have a presentation later on that, but it has to do with timing of invoices and basically a large accrual and reimbursement that happened on the payment of those in the prior year. So other, other than those particular items, our revenues are pretty consistent with what we would've seen in prior years. So local sales tax, you can see it's up roughly 3 percent year-over-year, it's about $65,000. That would be where we would anticipate. It's a little behind the state overall. The state overall sales tax is 5.4 percent year-over-year, but still an increase, and so we'll take that. Roughly about $65,000, it's 27 percent of the budget. If you look at the prior two years, that's about where we would anticipate it being, and so we're, we're on track right now for, for sales tax to meet budget. Mills tax, similar story, so mills tax is an increase of almost $42,000 year-over-year, 8.4 percent. And you can see, tracking as a percent of budget, we're still in that 33 percent range where we were last year, and so we did meet budget last year, so that percentage would be what we would anticipate to, to continue for budget this year. Transit occupancy is similar, so we have 2.9 percent increase year-over-year, that's only $5,600, a smaller tax collection as far as the overall budget. It's 47 percent of budget, that's a little ahead, roughly in line with what we would've seen last year. And most of those are, as you would expect, are loaded into the summer months where you have the vacation period. And so you can kinda see on the graph the dip that will occur in the fall and winter months, and so that's why we're so far ahead of the budget this time of year, 'cause it's more seasonal. So expenditures have been fairly even, very little change. You can see the up and down, that was prior year on the green line, the current year has been a little bit more consistent. Overall expenditures are where we'd expect. Let me show you the categorical breakdown. Realistically, about the same spot we would be across all the categories and level of expenditures year-over-year. You would anticipate the increase is probably a little more pronounced in the public safety functional area, because that's where majority of our employees are in sheriff's office, public safety. So breakdown health and welfare, we do that as well, so realistically, between social services, they're, they're roughly even this point in time, when you look at their two, their operating and their programs. The CSA is roughly even, a little, down a little bit, and that has to do a little bit with that accrual we were talking about earlier for this year compared to last year. And so, but roughly, same level of spend that, that we would expect to see this point in time during the fiscal year. So fund balance, if you remember, we were, we were changing fund balance to be more of an active number, a live number in a sense, rather than just at the fiscal year cutoff every year. So this was as of the end of September. Again, this is an unaudited number. So roughly, it was about $39 million in our fund balance. You back out certain restricted funds like opioids and grants and donations, and if we have that 20 percent policy minimum, which of course Davenport does, and we provide that to the rating agency, so that's roughly $24 million. So after all of those, the over and above that, that policy minimum, that would be considered unassigned fund balance, that could be spent as of the end of September, was just under $13.5 million. That will tick up as we're collecting and getting into property tax collections for the next few months. So your unassigned fund balance will, will increase through November, December, and then it'll start to decrease again until we get to that June collection for the next cycle of real estate. So you'll, you'll see that from a cash flow perspective. Budget stabilization is still $250,000. If you remember, we used $750,000 to balance the capital this year out of that. We'll be looking to restore that with year-end surplus, something that'll be coming to you likely at the November meeting. And we still have roughly $850,000 in the capital reserve. So economic and budget update, we do have a couple of things. So one of the things we do not have is, we do not have the CPI increase or the unemployment numbers due to the federal government shutdown. Those numbers have not been released yet, so they were to be delayed. The, the last update was they would be provided by the end of this month, but they're not available for this meeting. So what the Federal Reserve did do, they were actually meeting this time last month during our Board of Supervisors meeting, they did reduce their benchmark rate by quarter of a percentage point, so now it's four to four and a quarter percent. It's still anticipated they will reduce their, the interest rate again at the October meeting, pending, I'm assuming, information that they'll be able to receive from the federal, federal government, so. That next meeting is October 28th, 29th, that'll be next week. They'll have one more meeting before the end of the calendar year, there may be another reduction, so we, we monitor that. Obviously, that's good in a sense of the economy and businesses and investment and borrowing, it also reduces our interest earnings, so that's where we watch both as we anticipate what that may do to the budget as the Federal Reserve takes action. Do wanna mention the, did mention on the shutdown, well, because of the shutdown and also turnover in the Virginia Department of Education, there is a delay in reimbursements being processed, particularly for the school system. And so what that means is the county's having to front the money into our local contribution or transfer, waiting on this reimbursement to balance the school operations out every month. So eventually, that will be caught up, but that is something we're monitoring, and it should be a timing issue once the, all of those items do clear. You may see that, just wanted you to be aware of that. While it's not on the slide, do wanna make you aware, we've mentioned it a little bit, but as far as the federal government goes, so we are looking at, of course, coming up in the budget, our local composite index, we're looking for that reset. That should be November typically is when that comes in, we'll, we'll find out what that impact looks like. The other thing that is gonna be an impact for us, we're talking about changes at the federal level, is to benefit programs, and so SNAP program in particular, the, the old food stamps. And so there's going to be a shift in cost from the federal government to the states in administrative costs, starting next fiscal year. There's also going to be a shift in cost, possibly based on what they call the error rate for the distribution of those SNAP benefits. That's not anticipated until fiscal 2028. It goes by federal fiscal year, theirs is October 1st to September 30th, so it'll overlap a little bit with our fiscal year from a July to June date. And so at this time, it's between the federal government and the states. We will monitor action in the General Assembly this session as to if any or what proportion of those costs will be passed down to the localities. And so that, that will be something we monitor, but it, it could be a fairly significant cost share by the time if they pass it down to the localities, but that's more of a state decision. So as you're having opportunities and conversation with legislators, that would be a great topic to mention, that if the state could pick up the tab for that increase, it certainly would help localities. So, couple of things, we did, did close on the financing, and so it's very well-received, and so we mentioned last month some of the results, but roughly, we, we had what's called a premium in the bond world, which means we will actually have to pay back less than the $20 million, because our bonds were so sought after in the market, people were willing to pay a premium to obtain them. And so that's a, that's congratulations. We will look for, because now we have closed on that financing, all of the signatures have been attained, the money is actually in the state program that manages borrowed funds, we'll need to appropriate that money, and that will exceed the 1 percent of our budget. So we'll be looking to hold a public hearing at your November meeting, just to appropriate that $20 million. We'll look to reimburse the county for the purchase of the ModuCraft property, the $5 million, and then we'll need to have future discussion with the board on priority of projects with the rest of that money, namely A&E for CTE, public safety, 911, that were the intended purposes of ModuCraft, along with any other priority projects. We have discussed several options, but we have, we have not officially taken a vote in a sense on how we want that money, and realistically, till we have cost estimates on construction, that's gonna be difficult anyway for the remainder of that $20 million. Okay? That's it, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, any questions?
Anybody got any questions for Brian?
Go ahead, Brian, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Brian, with regard to the LCI, I, I think I heard you correctly that we're hoping to learn something in November. I remember the year before last, we as a board, if I recall correctly, got that number very late December, and that really caused quite a hiccup. We're kind of, you guys are in the heart of, you know, doing budget, preparing the budget for the board, so the sooner, the better in terms, and I know it's gonna be intuitive for you all working on the budget for us, but I think that we need the first notice that you get, because I, I know all of us are already thinking about priorities for next year, and talking about CIP and so forth, so I, I'm just looking for that number not to be a good number. I don't wanna be pessimistic about it, but I think it's reality. Talked to some of our state senators and legislators, and I'm not optimistic, unfortunately. So that'll come in as the request for new monies. That's how that ends up coming out, so. The only other question I had, do you have a current number on collections, on the amount of outstanding collectible, 30, 60, 90-day receivables?
Receivable, property taxes or anything in particular?
Yeah.
I do not have a number. What we were looking at for year-end in preparation for the audit, we were reasonable and within a realm of compared, comparatively historically, did not show me a great concern at this point in time of the fiscal year. Ms. Smith, I really wanna look at those December property tax collections to see how far behind they were when compared to last year. We did rebound well, especially on personal property as the year went on, so I wanna kinda take a look at that, but through kinda that 90-day look, July to September, we, we don't have any major concerns at this point, but I don't have a specific number. I'd be happy to, to provide a percentage or a number in a follow-up.
That's fine, thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, would you repeat again for the benefit of the audience and the people on YouTube about the ModuCraft borrowing the $20 million, and repeat the fact that we're not gonna have to pay back $20 million? I think that's amazing. I've never been able to borrow money and not have to pay back the full amount plus some more.
Me neither. Yes, sir. So the, similar to the way, bonds trade, similar to the way that a stock would, and so depending on the value, you have a premium or you have a discount. And so for the sake of our bonds, they were in the market, and some of it's timing, but our bond ratings are so high and our investment is so attractive from a stability standpoint that investors were willing to pay more money than they were actually worth, what's called a coupon rate. So bond is worth $1,000, if I wanna buy it, I have to pay $1,000. And so that's how that works in the market when it's in a premium status. So roughly what happened, when you look at the overall, is we, we as the county are receiving the benefit of having $20 million to spend on capital projects, but we're only gonna have to pay back about $19.7 million. Yes, sir. So the, similar to the way, bonds trade, similar to the way that a stock would. And so depending on the value, you have a premium or you have a discount. And so for the sake of our bonds, they were in the market, and some of it's timing, but our bond ratings are so high and our investment is so attractive from a stability standpoint that investors were willing to pay more money than they were actually worth what's called a coupon rate. So bond is worth a thousand dollars. If I want to buy it, I have to pay a thousand. And so that's how that works in the market when it's in a premium status. So roughly what happened when you look at the overall is we, as the county, are receiving the benefit of having twenty million dollars to spend on capital projects, but we're only going to have to pay back about nineteen-point-seven million. So we had about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar benefit that we're not going to have to pay money back on because of that premium in our debt service payments. So that's the benefit of high credit ratings, fiscal sustainability, very consistent methodical approach to finances that the rating agencies reward. And because of that consistency, you have a very attractive investment in the market when you do go to issue debt.
Thank you and your staff for all your hard work on that.
Thank you and the board.
They figured it out now, Mike?
Yeah, it's amazing. We must be the envy of southwest Virginia. I can't think of too many counties that can borrow.
There's not no one.
I would go beyond even southwest Virginia.
Yeah. I expect in Virginia, we go pretty tight.
I would think so.
And not to mention that we're drawing more interest than we're having to pay out on it anyway.
Right, right. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, you gonna help with CSA, right?
I am. If you will, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody that's going to help with CSA, you come for it, please.
Yes, sir.
Don't y'all be, if you're afraid, we're gonna go ahead and skip it.
We have.
Here comes one.
Yes, we got, I'll get this pulled up. So we'll do that, and then I'll finish up with the opioid update, if that's all right. Okay, let me get CSA. Okay, all right. So, Mr. Chairman, so we have Ms. Heather Kesterson, the CSA Program Manager with us. And so she is, we're going to tag team on this presentation, but it's been a while, and so I don't think we've provided an update to the board. And Mr. Zach Clay is our utilization manager. Welcome, Zach. And so we're going to tag team on the presentation, but there's several new board members that have come on the board since we, since we've last done an update, so wanted to provide that for you. And so what is CSA? What is, it's called the Children's Services Act, and so it's a state program that is locally administered. It can be considered a non-funded mandate depending on what the costs are. It was enacted in ninety-three. It is a state pool of funds. It combined about seven different funding streams into one. And so as certain expenses are incurred, we are able to be reimbursed through those pool funds, and there are certain obligations that happen with that. So the CSA program is child-centered, it's family-focused, and it has a community-based approach. And so the goals are to preserve families in the least restrictive environment and protect child welfare, community safety.
Thank you.
You want to pause for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Now, that's all right. Okay.
I'll be back in a minute.
All right. We will continue on.
Sorry about that, Brian.
No, it's all right. I want to make sure we didn't interrupt. Community Policy and Management Team. So there's a structure to it. And so the, at the upper level of governance is the Community Policy and Management Team. And so if the board will remember, you actually appoint the members of the CPMT. And so I am the Chair of the CPMT this year. And so, and I was last year. Luckily, they re-elected me. And so.
Rest of us run. We run.
That's, that's what I thought too, Mr. Carter. And so, no, it, very much an honor. And so we do, but as that governing board, it is composed of several core agencies dictated by state code. So you can see those, that's the Community Services Board, that's your Department of Social Services, Health Department, Juvenile Court Services Unit, there's a School Division rep, then you have a parent representative, and a private provider. So we also, as a locality, are allowed to add other members as the governing body may see fit. So we have an elected official, county administration appointee, and a county finance from a fiscal agent standpoint. And so, in addition to that, so then the CPMT appoints what is called the FAP, the Family Assessment and Planning Team. That's the interagency group. It's a smaller group. It's more of your core agencies that we mentioned. You can see the list there, I won't repeat them. But ultimately, the FAP team is the planning team. And so we'll have a few more, we'll go through that process. So for the process, just to kind of simplify, there's a case manager, one of these core agencies that we mentioned that will refer a case to CSA, determines initial eligibility. We'll talk about that in just a minute. So once that is determined, we have a case that is scheduled for FAP, the Assessment and Planning Team. The FAP team recommends services to CPMT. Ultimately, CPMT functions similar to what you would think in a Board of Supervisors role. CPMT approves the funding. And so at that point, then it becomes a case, and it's actively managed with staff moving on with that. So who is eligible? I won't read this entire slide. We'll certainly provide a copy of this in a future Friday packet for the board, so it can email it out as well, so you have the information. But it is dictated by the Code of Virginia, and so that code section is there. It basically is somebody who is required for special education. We'll talk about that a little more. Require foster care services. There are certain criteria that have to be met in order to be eligible in that area. What is called a child in need of services, or a CHINS, you may hear that acronym, that basically is determined by the court or at FAP depending on the bullets on the behaviors there, but basically means a danger to themselves or others or a behavioral health issue in summary. The child has emotional problem or currently at imminent risk of congregant care residential is what we look at. So it does serve children up to the age of eighteen. They're in private day school. It could be up to age twenty-two, or if they're in foster care, up to the age of twenty-one to be eligible for CSA funding. So as services are provided, we have a reimbursement process. If you remember, we just talked about the financial report and the timing of those reimbursements, that's this process. So we pay the vendor. It's on a reimbursement basis. So case manager reviews, and they sign off that the invoice is eligible to pay. The CSA office receives it. They process for payment, and then they submit a reimbursement request at the end of the month, every month. And so usually, it's a thirty-to-forty-five day turnaround before that reimbursement is received. Okay? So services that are approved, one thing, we'll come back to this, so I wanted to point this for the board. So there is a varied local match rate in the administration of the program. So as staff, what we look at is how do we maximize that match rate so the county, the locality from our tax structure pays the least amount of money in provision of the services. Some of that is required by code. We're required to find the available funding streams first before tapping into CSA funds. If we have to access CSA funds because of eligibility, we have what's for a local match of fourteen, roughly fourteen percent, what we call community-based services, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. Also, family foster care. So as staff and as we're looking in the management of the program, we try and prioritize those. A little bit higher match is twenty-eight percent local match. So the state would roughly pay seventy, the county would pay thirty. That's private day school, residential education, what's called therapeutic foster care, or TFC you might see abbreviated. Thirty-five percent, which is the highest local match, is in what is called residential, which is whether foster care or parental placement. So as some of the future slides, we're going to talk about those costs and how we manage that as part of the program. But wanted to make that differential to show as we talk about some of these budget pressures, what it looks like as far as a local cost that we're going to be managing, FAP, CPMT, and then ultimately staff level. Okay? There is nondiscretionary funding in the program. There are certain things that are mandated that we realistically cannot do anything about. One of those is what's called private day school. And that's, what is generated from that is pretty much all controlled at the school system. It is an individualized education plan. They go through a process that is determined that the child needs to have private day education instead of public school education. It cannot meet their needs in the public school system. And so that local match, we, this has been the second or third year we've invoiced a hundred percent to the school system. With a county does not pick that up, the school system actually pays the local match for all private day invoices. And so CSA is required to fund foster care placements, but that's only basic enhanced maintenance, childcare, and clothing. Any other costs, we're not required to. However, typically, there are things that go on in the case, and it's probably to the benefit of the county that those be funded. And so if eligible for funding, there's certain times that services are court-ordered, and so we attempt to fund those as best we can. All right. So we have a little bit breakdown of some comparisons of the costs. Want to turn it over to Ms. Kesterson, and then we'll pivot to the next.
So first, we have the gross cost per services. This is for last fiscal year, so comparing it to the year before. So we closed out our fiscal year at the end of September, so we can see kind of where some of those changes are, along with our match rates on the bottom. Again, the schools did pay just under a million dollars for that local match for private day school last year. So that, we pay it, and then we invoice them each month to get a reimbursement for that. And again, we'll look at the children that we serve in each category. You can see kind of where our, most children are served in our community-based services, which is where we would like to serve, and some numbers down and up over last year, and we'll look a little bit more specifically at those. So next, we break it down by the agency for FY25. And so the expenditures are gross. It's, can be broken down a little bit more into kind of those net costs, but it's easier to pull them this way initially. And so each agency does cover services in each of the categories per agency, so that number can fluctuate a little bit, but we can see that DSS does have the most children served, along with the greatest number of expenditures for us last year. And they do tend to have some of the more expensive services along with the higher match rate also. So then breaking it down by specific service, we can see these are net expenditures, so this is the percentage of what the county did pay out last year in FY25 for those services. And again, we can see private day was nineteen percent of the children served, but was forty-six percent of our expenditures. And the same thing for foster care residential, eight percent, which was our smallest category of children, but was our second-largest cost to the county at twenty percent of the budget. You're also able to see forty-three percent of our kids got community-based services, but that was only seven percent of our cost. So really trying to see how can we maximize use of those. Again, it's the least amount of cost to the county, and also allows our childrens to stay here in the community, families to stay together. And also kind of looking at the, the rate, some of the more expensive ones do also have that higher match rate to the county. And then this was just average local cost per child, to be able to see how much on average does each child that we serve cost. And again, we can see kind of that increase between twenty-four and twenty-five really has to do with the increase of children in private day and foster care residential. Those are our two priciest services that we fund. So again, we've kind of gone up and down a little bit, but kind of a significant increase last year. I did pull just kind of interesting information to see how are our youth kind of spread across the county. And so this is percentage of total CSA youth. We served one-hundred-and-ninety-nine kids last year, so two-hundred, to kind of make some of that numbers interesting and kind of easier to figure out. So we can see our kids are kind of spread across the county. And then court involvement really has to do with children that are involved, whether that be probation, criminal matters, a child in need of services, sort of before the courts for some reason. A lot of these children also have law enforcement involvement, whether that be threats of self to harm themselves or others. We recently had a child involved with the FBI. So a variety of different other interactions with other services within our community. So, and I would say overall, DSS was the number-one agency that case managed in each district. And overall, thirty-one percent of our children served by CSA are court-involved for some reason, whether that be a need, child in need of services or criminal matters. This doesn't include children in foster care who are before the courts for Then we also went ahead and pulled kind of just locality comparisons for FY25, just to kind of see where we stack up with our other localities that are similar. And in this area, we can see that we've had a decrease in the number of children that we've served over the last year and across several years. We've also been able to reduce the cost per child, and that's really had to do with use of community-based services. And really, we've been able to kind of manage the length of those services better, and also using some different services and different funding streams that have helped with that. But it is still kind of a little bit higher than some of the others for the local costs and such. That has a lot to do with what services that we're using, those private day residential services that have the higher match rate. And then just a breakdown by services that we can see, again, looking at, we're serving sixty-seven percent of our youth are served in a community-based setting, with thirteen percent of our budget. Just compared to our other localities, we're doing well there. And I think, again, that goes back to managing those services, the utilization, looking at other funding streams. And then kind of private day is in there. We can see kind of where we are in comparison to others. Henry County does have something built into their local school system to allow for some alternative schooling there, so that's why their numbers are as low as they are. And so the last looks at, breaks down foster care residential and residential education. So a little bit, the foster care residential is group home placements. So these are kids placed out of the home in a group home setting. And so we are kind of, again, the percentage-wise, have the highest percentage of our children in those settings. And so some different things that we're looking at to try to work on that is building some better relationships with foster families and our therapeutic foster centers, some work around FAP, and working through that process. Residential education is both children in foster care and parents have decided to place their child in, or that the child needs to have that. The child will then return home from there. That is a psychiatric residential treatment facility. We pay the education portion, and Medicaid picks up the daily rate for those. So what are driving our costs overall? Why are we seeing kind of the rates that we are the cost overall? We've had a twenty-four percent increase in costs for our foster care residential places, placements. That's about seventeen thousand dollars a year per child. Last year, we did serve one less child in that category. So, and it's still an increase with less children. CSA has limited control over these placements. DSS has to identify those step-down placements, has to find them. Again, those placements can be therapeutic foster care, local foster, local foster homes, or there's been a real push from the state on kinship and fictive kin. DSS has done a really great job of this. I really do think we are placing with family or family friends more regularly than we have in the past. So we definitely have seen some work with that. But there's just a real need for foster homes, especially when you start to see teenagers that are coming into care. We've seen a fifty-seven percent increase in residential education over the last year. We had twelve additional children served in FY25. That does cost about seven thousand dollars a year per child. Again, these children are either in foster care or placed on a parental placement with the plan for the child to return home afterwards. Those children sometimes are court-ordered into placement. These don't come from the schools. They're not IEP placements. We do not have any children placed in a residential facility from their IEP directly. Just trying to make sure. We just pay the education portion of that placement. So for both foster care residential and residential education placements, there is a local Medicaid match that has to be paid, and that's directed directly from, or deducted directly from our OCS reimbursement each month. So we can see that we had over a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase from FY24 to 25 from that. And so again, that goes back to that increase in foster care residential and residential education placements. And so for private day, it was a six percent increase in costs last year with eight less children served. CSA has no control over this given federal laws. If an IEP says a child is in private day, they're in private day. We, for this fiscal year, there was legislation that capped the rate increase at five percent for private day schools, so that helps a little bit. This also doesn't include the cost of transporting these children to and from the res, or to and from the private day school placements every day. So this is just for the education piece of it. We did have a decrease in community-based services last year, but really, this comes from utilization review and management. So we had found that there was some federal funding that's available, and there was a big push from myself to be able to access that money. And I will say, across the state, a lot of places did not. So we have worked with DSS In-Home to maximize use of this funding stream. It's no local match on it, so how can we get it? So I have partnered with the DSS In-Home team, and we've really been one of the few localities that use it. So I really appreciate their collaboration on that. We have had an increase of evidence-based practices. So these really have research to back them for better outcomes. They have shorter timeframes. We have a way to say, is this working? Is it not? Is it a good fit? So we've really started using those. And then having Zach come in and do those utilization reviews on cases to say, is this working? Is this not working? Do we need to look at something else?
Anybody got any questions? Any questions, any comments?
There's a lot of numbers. So I think we'll wrap up. What we want to summarize is in the program, so it's a roughly seven million dollar a year program. It's about seven percent of the overall county budget, gross cost. And so, of course, it's a very complicated program, as you have, as you have heard. Really, what Really, what we've seen, I want to summarize on the previous slides, is that what's driving the costs are residential, mostly foster cares on parental placements, and it's also private day. And so we have certain ability to maintain or control some of that, not all. What hurts us on, if you remember back from that previous slide, residential is a thirty-five percent local match. So the more we have in residential, the more it costs the county. And the longer we have them in residential, the more it costs the county. In addition to that, because we're in a residential facility, there is a Medicaid. Medicaid helps pay for that, but that's deducted from our state reimbursement, so we get hit twice. We have to pay a thirty-five percent local match rate, and our reimbursement from the state is dropped by a Medicaid match rate. We don't exactly ever get what that number is. The federal government does what it wants to do, but we know it reduces. We do get later an accounting of that, so. But ultimately, that's why as a CPMT and a CSA program, we're focused on residential, and we're also going to be focused on private day. And so we have made several enhancements to the program. So as we get through, you probably hear this again as part of the budget process, so we wanted to provide an update. We know there's been board members that have asked a couple of questions about costs in the CSA program. It is a lot, and there are a lot of invoices, and several kids have multiple services, so they're paid at multiple vendors every month. There really has been a lot of progress. Our CSA staff went to the state CSA conference last week, and they were actually mentioned and collaborated with, and so they actually have looked at a model for other localities wanting to make some of the improvements we have made. So that's a testament to the staff and the work that they've put in. But some of the enhancements we've made, we increased the family participation in the FAP process. We did not have families participating. They weren't signing off on services. And if your parents and families aren't signing off or engaged, you have very, very reduced chances of success. So that is greatly improved. We have the data to show that. We've restructured those FAP meetings to ensure collaboration. There's more role-playing and discussion now in those meetings than there's, there's planning sessions. We've created a monthly review committee. We look at more high-dollar-focused residential cases in particular, and we actually have somebody from the state office of children's services in those meetings. So it goes back to managing the program, doing what we can in the parameters that we're allowed to operate. So there's been increased communication. We did implement a new health record system that's going to save a ton of time for staff and the agencies and be able to get in. Ms. Smith always had trouble with the, the old File Vista system, so hopefully this one will work better. But ultimately, what we look at is minimal investments for improved efficiency, and so that system should improve efficiency. We look at increased utilization review, and we have, Mr. Clay, Zach does that. And so really what, to think of a utilization review, that's realistically an audit. That's an audit of a facility to make sure they're doing and providing the services that we're paying them for, and that's what Zach does. He schedules visits, he goes and looks at records, and he makes sure that we're getting a money's worth for the county taxpayer. So he does an excellent job of that. So we also have a strategic plan to address needs within the program. I wanted to mention this because obviously, we operate on strategic plans. The county has a strategic plan, CPMT has a strategic plan. And so part of what we're looking at is, one of the options approved in that strategic plan is to reduce children in foster care residential by five percent annually over the next three years, and the same for private day placements. So we're constantly working behind the scenes, having conversations, probably be some conversations in an upcoming budget discussion, some, some ideas, but certainly want the board to be aware that there are some thoughts that we have, some ways we may could look to improve and, and better manage those costs. And I think one of the things, and we mentioned it a little bit earlier in the slide, but there's been a lot of information thrown at you. But one thing that was mentioned in our most recent state audit of our CSA program is discharge planning, how critical that is to properly managing. And so what that means is that you are stepping down a child out of a very high-cost facility when they're ready, and they're not sitting waiting unnecessarily, and the county is continuing to foot that bill. That in a nutshell is what proper discharge planning is. So we're having increased emphasis on that. We'll be continuing to work on that. Wanted to mention the FAP. We talked about collaboration with the family. The goal is by 2028 to have that a hundred percent of the time. We're almost there now, certainly think. You can only help so much. Parents have to work, they get sick, so sometimes they may not attend a meeting, but we're working on that. The length of stay, I jumped ahead, I got, so I got excited, the discharge planning. And so it's what we're talking about, to do that ninety-five percent of the time. I think one of the things we're looking at, so if you remember, we've had, of course, a new position request in CSA program the last couple of years, we just haven't been able to fund it. One of the things that we're looking at, we have two staff, well, two and a half, to manage two hundred children. And so that's a lot of processing and paperwork. We have three, sometimes four, FAP meetings a month, or maybe every month, four, four every month now, and one CPMT meeting. So we prepare an agenda for this board once a month, basically. The CSA staff prepares five agendas and five meetings a month, in addition to processing bills and paying all these. So one of the things we're, we'll look at is how do we streamline? Part of the reason for that health record system is how do we make this more efficient so that we can better manage discharge planning and help with our departments? The more that is managed, the less cost it is to the county. And so overall, these are some areas working in the CSA office. Certainly know there's a lot of information. We'll get a copy of the presentation to you, but happy to answer any questions or thoughts the board may have.
Anybody got any questions?
Can I make a statement? Guys, thank you so much for this outstanding presentation. It is drinking out of a fire hose, no question. I first of all, want to remind the board that we have a legislative priority that we continue to advocate for, and I've taken it to the level of VACO at this point and talked to our legislators. A lot of some of these increased costs have been because there's been unfettered, unrestricted mandates on those providing services, and their costs have increased exponentially in some cases. But they can charge whatever they want from year to year, and we are on the hook. And so that five percent cap Heather was talking about, I think there was some pressure in the General Assembly on that, but five percent is not where we need to be by far. So we, as a board, have chosen through your adoption of the legislative agenda to keep pushing this, and I will be taking that to the state level as well. The other thing, I think a year and a half or so ago, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools has been working on a spreadsheet for us that starts to look at how we would buy down the cost of residential care if during the process of getting the CTE center built and having some availability of space wherein the schools could bring some of these kids back into Franklin County, into their community. And some of those preliminary numbers I've got in a spreadsheet represents up to maybe four, five hundred thousand dollar savings. It's literally, we're paying almost nine hundred thousand dollars a month in some cases. Heather, I know these numbers probably aren't computing with you. I've got the spreadsheet. But, and the last thing that I will say is Heather does an extraordinary job. Her leadership is impeccable. And Zach, the addition of Zach to our team, I'm just going to tell the members of this board, I've never seen any accountability of, of paying out taxpayer dollars and making sure that we're getting what we think we're getting, especially for these children that are vulnerable. Zach, you do an outstanding job of visiting these children, visiting the institutions that they're in, and keeping an eye on everything and including tax dollars being spent. And that is something that we really can't place a value on, but I specifically, being the CPMT rep, appreciate and I see month to month the work that you put in, and I know it's a lot of support to Heather, being able to kind of reaffirm what we think we know. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else got anything to say?
Chris? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would just echo Vice Chair Smith's sentiments and so forth of staff. I think the, the big takeaway today is there have been strategic incremental improvements over the last four or five years, specifically at the CPMT level, but also the FAP level. And I kindly thank Brian, I know Brian chairs the CPMT, and Ms. Smith, I know you also serve on the CPMT, but Heather and Zach, as, as Ms. Smith noted, that a lot of the work comes out of that office. I'd further note that with the evaluation review of the Office of Children's Services enrichment of our specific program from that stemmed our strategic plan, if you will, for, for our CSA program. To the point now with our metrics where we're serving more kids at community-based services at a less cost, Heather, you mentioned going after those federal dollars. That's got the attention of several CSA programs around the state where they're now calling, wanting to look, wow, what is Franklin County doing? Now again, Rome wasn't built in a day. This takes a lot, a lot of time. We know the specific things that was pointed out, the two takeaways, again, is private education day placements, very, very expensive. We have a lot of those in the county at, at the school system, and I think it was already mentioned, the opportunity perhaps of bringing a lot of that back locally to Franklin County can help, and we have those ongoing discussions with the school system. But then secondly, the residential group home placements, they're very expensive, and I think I saw the metric of twenty-six. We were the highest in the region in terms of those placements, for whatever reason. And I think that gets specifically to case management, and we are actively working with social services to specifically emphasize that's where a lot of the cost and the dollars are, are these residential group homes and private day placements. And the more that we can strategically bring those numbers down, we will have better years like we did this last fiscal year where we actually landed the plane under budget, and I have not seen that in a few years. And so I kindly thank the staff, and not just them, but the staff of social services, the school system, all the CPMT partners, Court Services Unit, Community Services Board. It really takes a team effort, and we've seen marked improvement. So I don't want to belabor this, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, but it's such a significant component and cost to our budget, and we just don't really give it enough credit sometimes when we see some positive things going on. Thank you all.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to take a quick break, and then we'll be right back in one minute.
Ms. Smith, you got a question?
I do, I do, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've got it right here. Okay, I would move that the Board of Supervisors move into closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel discussion, appointments at county boards and commissions, A3, discussion of acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property, A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry's expansion of an existing business or industry, A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and A29, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Second.
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 Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
I will ask Mr. Tatum if he would read the certification resolution to get us out of closed session.
All right. I certify that only public business matters, lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in which this certification applies.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Lori, if you would, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson's absent for the vote.
And I called you Lori again, and I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you. So we are now back in open session. We're juggling a few things on the agenda with a few interruptions that we've had earlier this afternoon. So the first thing that I would ask my colleagues to take up are three appointments that we need to make tonight. The first one being Mr. Tatum, do you want to offer an appointee for the Recreation Advisory Commission?
Yes, I do, and I'm happy to see he's here tonight. I would like to appoint Mr. Ed Saunders to the, to the Recreation Advisory Commission, and I'm pleased he agreed to take that step.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All those in favor, do we need a roll call for this? Okay, just all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, and that carries. Congratulations, Mr. Saunders. We look forward to having you onboard. Okay, the next appointee, Mr. Jamison, would you like to make an at-large appointment for the Recreation Advisory Committee, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to nominate Greg James for that large seat for the Rec Department.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign, and that carries, and we extend our gratitude to Mr. James as well. I have an appointment that I would like to offer up if someone would make the motion, since I'm sitting in his chair, for the unexpired term on the DSS Board for the Gills Creek District.
Okay, I would like to, I make a motion that we appoint Kristen Roberts to fill that, that position for the remaining balance of the, of the term.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign, and we congratulate Dr. Roberts on her appointment. Thank you all so much. It takes all of us forming a good team with our citizens, and we're so much better because of it. So thank you all for stepping up. We greatly appreciate that. Okay, the next item that we are going to take up is going to be the, the mitigate, the Smith Farm Mitigation Bank. Mr. Sandy, if you'd like to provide some opening remarks.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. I'm just going to go through quickly, just kind of some reminders about this. We've talked about it for the last couple of months, so I think you're generally familiar with it, but I'll just give you some brief recap. So we did begin negotiating a contract in an agreement with Clearwater Mitigation earlier this year for a mitigation bank at the Smith Farm property. There was a public hearing that was scheduled to gather public comments back in August, and so at your August meeting, we did hold a public hearing, and that was actually continued to September. So technically, we had a public hearing again in September on, on that item, and we did have one speaker who came and spoke at that time. Then it was carried over to the Thursday meeting in September, and we had some more discussion, and at that time, the, the board kind of authorized staff to keep moving forward with a little small subcommittee. So I had two, two volunteers from, from your board, Mr. Jamison and Mr. Quinn, that assisted Mark Popovich from Jim's office, as well as Brian and Brandy, was kind of the team that continued to negotiate. And really, the, the essence of that was to kind of work through a proposal that Mr. Jamison had, had offered, kind of a, a different way of looking at the mitigation bank and a different way of looking at the partnership. And so for the last month, we've been talking back and forth with the Clearwater Mitigation folks, and we've come up with a, kind of a final draft of mitigation that, you know, that our team believes, you know, kind of strikes that balance of, of the needs and benefits for utilizing the mitigation bank. And so you have a copy in, in front of you, and it's watermarked with a draft date of ten twenty-one twenty-five, just to make sure everybody's kind of got the most current version that we've been working with. We've, we've gone through several iterations of this over, over several months, and so making sure you have the right copy in front of you of where we are today. Just again, for a really quick recap, you know, the, the Smith Farm is, is in essence about four hundred acres. This would take about a hundred and sixty-five of those acres, kind of in this crosshatched area would be the mitigation area. These would be stream areas primarily with buffers along those, and leaving the rest of the property for some of the recreational uses that were discussed with the board last month as well as part of the Smith Farm Master Plan. So just getting into kind of the revised framework of the agreement, Clearwater Mitigation would be responsible to acquire all the permits, do the development and manage the mitigation bank, really on behalf of the county, but utilizing the county property, and this would be done through an easement that would be put over those crosshatch areas that I just showed. So the county would still maintain the ownership of the underlying property. There would be an easement that would be established on that, approximately a hundred and sixty-five acres for the bank purposes, leaving the balance, as I said, for recreational uses or other uses. And I will point out too, as the next bullet talks to, is that this has really always been intended from the beginning to coexist with the recreation plan, with the recreation master plan, and there is language to that in the agreement that we'll continue to work together on both of those. together on both of those uses, the recreational uses and the mitigation portion, you know, and so, with that, having said that, I think there's also opportunities to still use the mitigation area for walking trails and so forth. Those would still be permitted uses within those areas, so they wouldn't be totally excluded from any activity. We just wouldn't want to see pavement, parking lots, you know, things of that nature in there. So, there will still be opportunities to utilize, you know, some of those easement areas as well. Clearwater, another point is Clearwater invests all the capital funding to get the bank started, and there would be no county capital funding required. And so, they would take on all the permitting work, which is an 18 to maybe 24-month process. Once that's approved, then they would take care of the construction, they would take care of all the planning and permitting, and they would do the tree plantings and redo the stream beds and all the construction work that would go in that. So, the Clearwater would give the county a total of 2,850 stream credits and a total of 25 nutrient credits at no cost to the county. So, that's kind of one of the changes that we had worked through over the last month was Mr. Jamison's proposal of really just allocating credits to the county with no county investment and no county dollars being required. So, just, I wanted to summarize, you know, at least from my point of view, as the benefits of this agreement of, you know, how this benefits the county. The obvious reason is that we're getting, well, I say we, the park will be making available 8,650 stream credits and 25 nutrient credits, which will be available to the development community, if I use that term, within the watershed. So, that's in addition to what the county would receive. So, there's the benefit of just having the credits in the watershed for developers in the area, economic development, and so forth, besides the credits that the county would get. And I should note that the agreement also provides a mechanism for the county to sell the credits that we get, to be able to sell those back. If we get to the point in the future and realize we don't need that many credits for county uses, that we could put those credits back on the market, and those credits could be sold to developers, you know, in the county that may be working in the county or in the watershed. Another benefit that we see from this is that the easement will provide improved water quality and wildlife habitat on the Smith Farm, so that 160-so acres will be planted with trees. The streams will be, you know, repurposed, if you will, and so, that, we see that as a benefit to not only the Smith Farm and the adjacent recreational uses, but also to Smith Mountain Lake, whereas now, the water quality leaving the site, going into the lake, you know, may have some undesirable quantities of sedimentation or other things. This will help offset some of those impacts. Again, as I mentioned before, the county has no capital investment in the mitigation bank, and then the staff oversight and management required will be significantly reduced under this current framework. As I mentioned earlier, the mitigation bank will not interfere with the proposed recreational plans, so, again, the plan is that these would coexist and work together. The availability of the credits to the county can help address county's future credit needs as part of any future development. So, again, if we're looking in five years, for instance, to build a new structure that's owned by the county, we'd be able to utilize those credits. You know, we actually have already used some of these credits or allocated some of these nutrient credits for some work at Summit View, for some work at the Glade Hill Fire Station, so actually, some of these credits have already been used for county projects. And then, a final one is that Clearwater manages the entire process of the bank. And so, again, from a staff perspective, that does not require a lot of staff hours, staff management, staff time. Clearwater is really responsible for that. And then, the other thing to mention there is, we mentioned it previously, but the county, if the county was to go create a bank and try to sell credits, the county would not be able to do that on their own. They would have to have a third party assist us in doing that. And so, you know, really, you know, we have to have a third party to help in this process. And so, Clearwater is serving as that, you know, consultant or agent, in this case, to assist us. So, I'll really stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to give an opportunity for Mr. Jamison, Mr. Quinn to make any comments if they felt they wanted to make any comments or had any remaining questions or concerns about the agreement, you know, and then after that, you know, I would say that the staff does recommend that the Board approve the revised agreement and authorize the county attorney and county administrator to sign the necessary documents to execute the agreement. And that would be several things. That'd be not only the agreement, but also establishing the easement, which would be placed on the property and some other paperwork like that.
So, Mr. Sandy, before I defer to my colleagues, would Mr. Proust like to offer any remarks?
He's certainly here. He's come from Richmond, and so, if you want to give him an opportunity.
Absolutely, if that's okay with the Board at this point. I certainly want to hear from our colleagues that worked on this. Welcome, we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here. Thanks for taking this up again. I don't have anything specific to mention, I think. Just want to thank Mr. Quinn, and Mr. Jamison, thank Steve. I think we've worked hard to negotiate what is a good deal, I think, for both parties, and we're hopeful that it'll get passed tonight, and it'll be approved, and really, you know, this is like, this was sort of hard work, but the hard work really begins after the fact. So, I hope I'm down here a lot more to have meetings about this project. If you need me to answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Are there any questions from supervisors? We will defer to Mr. Jamison and Mr. Quinn, but are there any other questions right now for Mr. Proust? Okay, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna open the floor now for Mr. Quinn and Mr. Jamison to offer some remarks to the Board.
First, I'd like to thank you, Bobby. I appreciate your patience with us, and I do feel it's a good deal for both parties, for the county especially. It's clean, it's simple, and we're not investing any of the tax money in it, and we're still benefiting on the credits.
Mr. Quinn?
Also, thank you very much, Bobby. I think it's a good deal for the county, and I think that there is a huge benefit in us restoring the Smith Farm and restoring these creeks to how they used to be, taking the, putting the curves back in the creeks and putting the floodplain back surrounding the creek. And so, I think all the work that's going to be done to get these credits is really going to complement all the work we're doing with the concept plan to bring in the facilities, the recreational facilities there. So, I really think that this is a good step in the right direction. And then, of course, as a benefit, we get these credits that we need for, well, current development and future development. And so, I think all the way around, it's a very good, and I like the fact that we don't put any money in in the beginning, and we've, thanks to Marshall, we've made this a very simple deal. And so, all the way around, it's very good, I think. So, thank you.
Okay, does any, do any of my colleagues have questions for Mr. Jamison or Mr. Quinn? I would like to personally thank both of you for being so proactive and committed to the process. You all have done a masterful job working with Steve and with Bobby, and we very much appreciate that representation that you've given us.
The staff has really put a lot of time in on this, and they deserve the praise, and they did the work.
Absolutely. I would include the staff, yeah. Okay, so, given that, is the Board ready to take action on this matter? If you are ready, I will entertain a motion as such.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Quinn?
It doesn't matter.
No, it's your baby.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the proposed agreement with Clearwater Mitigation v. LLC dated October 21st, 2025, as presented and authorized the county administrator and county attorney to sign all documents necessary to execute the agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any further discussion on this before we take a vote? Okay, we will need a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
Okay, congratulations for both parties. We're excited. Thank you for being a good partner with Franklin County. Okay, super. So, we're gonna pick up on a couple of things, gentlemen, that got kind of misplaced during our afternoon, of asking Mr. Carter if you would be kind enough to come up and pick up the opioid grant projects update.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board. So, we'll try and make this very brief. I think for the opioid update, we've had a couple of updates last couple of months, and you heard from Piedmont Community Services last month, and so, we're looking for not necessarily a vote from the Board, but general consensus, we're moving in the right direction for an application. You're okay with the concept of the projects? So, real quick, the opioid settlement funds, they change frequently because new agreements are settled, there's differences in the funds that come in. It's all related around abatement as to what we can spend those funds for, and so, without reading that, here are the list, but if you look at all that, it's all about treatment, it's all about efforts and the nature of that to abate opioid, the opioid epidemic. So, the projects that we mentioned last month, we have a current project that is funded, that is for the Grace House, and that's for renovations. That was $155,000 that the Board previously approved. We submitted an application that's been awarded. So, what we had asked Piedmont to do and what staff is looking at now is a three-year funding plan for opioid funds. And so, one of the items that have come up since the last request is continuation, or I guess, reimplementation of the community paramedicine program. And so, Chief Fowler, of course, with Mr. Sandy, we put together a proposal and a plan to resurrect that program. So, we're currently working with the opioid abatement authorities to what is eligible and what is not in that proposal. Hopefully, all of it is eligible, but we're not ready to tell you that, all of it, but the total three-year plan would be $435,000 if that was deemed eligible, and I have some numbers off the next slide to kind of show you a cost. A program that actually literally came to me today is the Eagles Nest Substance Abuse Treatment Program. They're actually looking to, they have a facility in Floyd, they're actually looking to place one in the county. It's very specific, and it is faith-based. I think that could be a very reasonable option, and I think that program could coincide with the Addiction Recovery Program that would grant the sheriff's office uses. So, we're gonna look at that. We have no estimated costs at this time. And then, we have the Piedmont Community Services Project, so their priority level, which we agree with at a staff level, is that they would like for a three-year funding plan to continue funding for their family recovery court or their drug court that, right now, is funded through a federal grant. That federal grant, at some point, will be expiring next year. Right now, it expires September 30th, 2026. So, their request is for opioid funds to pick up at least a portion of that after that grant expires.
Brian, I'm gonna interrupt you if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so I don't forget this question. So, if the feds pull the balance of that funding, is the recommendation still going to be for it to begin next September?
If the federal government pulls that, then we could come back and look for funding earlier.
Okay.
So, the nice thing about the opioid funds is they're much more flexible than use of federal grant money.
Thank you.
Right now, we're, there's no intention that we have heard of the federal government revering that money since we've had approval. Now, what they may not do is approve an extension request, and that will come up probably around the March timeframe next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The second priority is the Fresh Coalition, and so, that would center around, from an opioid perspective, supplies, training, substance, you know, abuse training and events, and so, that would be for a three-year, about $269,000. They're requesting the Pearl Program, which would barely be a generator for their Grace House building. So, you have the current project, which is renovations, this would be a generator for that building, and then a mobile unit, basically fuel for their mobile unit that they've shared with this Board before, just under $9,000. So, what we're proposing to continue moving forward on is to kind of have a sources and uses schedule here for. So, here's what the next three years of funding, or available funding, will look like from opioid funds. So, this is what we have received as a county directly, or will plan to receive based on current abatement schedules, what the, an application to the opioid abatement authority may receive to us based on their own schedule of available funding the county can apply for, and then their gold standard. So, it's just under $1.45 million in, over the next three years. Now, this, keep in mind, this includes an accumulation of unspent funds for the last couple of fiscal years. So, and that's why I say the schedules keep changing. When you submitted the application of $155,000, the opioid, the OAA funds were much less, and then they revised their schedule, and there's significantly more money from the OAA and their gold standard that we can apply for. So, when you look at the large numbers in the 2026 year, that's why they look so large. That's an accumulation of two or three years' worth of numbers that we can apply for and carry forward if we're not ready to spend them. So, looking at the uses, you have a community paramedicine program. There'd be a little bit more in an upfront cost, and then more of an annual sustained right now of $130,000. That would be a staff and supplies, equipment to run the program. And so, total three-year would be $435,000. The family recovery court, they really wouldn't need any money in 2026 because of that federal grants, looking to pick up, I'm rounding roughly $150,000 for years two and three in our window that we're looking at, so $300,000 total. Fresh Coalition would be roughly $90,000 per year, and so, the Eagles Nest program, we're not sure of yet. But if you notice, we have about a $445,000 difference between the available funding and the request, so we could certainly either modify or submit for that Eagles Nest program. This will get us through a three-year window. After this, we would have spent down some of those kind of couple of years, prior years funds, so that bullet point, the bottom is, when we look at the next three-year cycle, 2029 through 2031, we're gonna be receiving roughly $200,000 annually. So, one, there would be no commitment from any of this application that we continue funding at this level, and anybody that, any program we are able to fund, there's gonna have to be discussions at the end of this three-year window that, hey, county only has $200,000 ongoing of opioid funding, so probably some of these programs are gonna have to be re-prioritized or pared down at the end of this three-year window. But the recommendation is to consider these four project areas for an application, and so, we know the recovery court's already stood up, it's just funded by a grant. The Fresh Coalition exists now, it's an existing program, there's just some facets we would use. The community paramedicine, we had in existence, so we know pretty much the groundwork that goes into these programs. The only thing that would be new is this Eagles Nest, but we could certainly see a benefit to this program as it's tied into substance abuse treatment. So, we'll provide more details on that. What we're looking at is an application. So, the application deadline for any funding in this current fiscal year, 2026, it'll end June 30th next year, is December 4th. If we want to look for an application for 2027 that starts next July 1st, it's gonna be March 16th of next year. So, if the Board is okay, what we would need is kind of an approval for staff to move forward with developing an application, and then we could certainly come back at the November meeting, provide more information. But ultimately, even if an application is submitted, the Board would have to accept the grant award regardless before we obligate the funds. So, what staff would like is just ultimately discussion from the Board or consensus, are these reasonable projects? Are we okay with that? Are there areas where the Board's not comfortable, and they'd like staff to maybe focus in a different area? So, Madam Vice Chair, that's where we're at, be happy to answer any questions or discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. That's a very good report. I'll open the floor for any discussion or questions. Mr. Quinn?
Brian, so, I think the words you said were really important, you know, in the third year, you're spending $390,000 plus Eagles Nest program, right? So, we don't know what that'll be, but it's some big amount of money. And then, in year four and on, you're expecting to get $200,000, and so, this isn't a license to continue spending at that level, there's a real need to bring that down. So, you said the words, I think it's just important that we bake your words into this so we, so the county doesn't assume a commitment now between 200 and whatever these programs are running in that third year.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And this is all, again, due, for clarification, to the opioid settlements?
Yes.
The legal, the litigation piece of this that's coming to the localities.
Yes, and so, and our applications are for one fiscal year at a time, so I have to, I will have to apply three different applications for this window. So, what I think these numbers could possibly change, as I said, we have, we just had two new opioid settlements really in the last couple of months, the Kroger, not the Kroger, the Henry Schein, and there is a third, second one. That's gonna change this whole schedule, because then the OAA is gonna get those schedules, and that's gonna change the money available to us for the county. In addition, we may get another extension from that federal grant, and so, right now, this is, these are the numbers we know. I realistically think this will probably look better by the time we get to an application next year. We just don't know all of that right now. I think this is probably worst-case scenario. I think we could probably extend some of these programs a little bit longer, to year four or five.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm fine with this, Brian. I'm just curious, the school system, are they able to apply for this opioid money separately from the county, or is there a program at the school system that perhaps, say, instead of this Eagles Nest, we could direct some funding their way towards a drug program?
They are not able to apply. It would have to run through the county. The Fresh Coalition is actually in the school system today.
Okay.
So the thought of that program is that they would partner with the school system a lot of that education.
Okay, perfect.
But we can certainly reach out if you would like a more direct program, but that was, that was part of the thought, Mr. Carter.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Carter, following up, would you like there to be some work done to figure out if the schools have a need for a piece of this funding, especially moving forward with carryovers in this budget?
Well, I think initially, when we discussed all this, we directed maybe some program for the schools, a middle school program, or something to that effect. Or is there any way we could use this towards SRO funding as part of a drug rehabilitation program?
You may could use it from a DARE program perspective because of the abatement and the education piece of it. So we can certainly have that conversation between the school system and the sheriff. I don't know that we would have it in the sense of a true SRO, but maybe there's a way. And the reason why I say that is because the guidance is very clear that we also can't use these funds to fund a paramedic firefighter position. So it won't fund law enforcement either, but there may be a way we could fund a DARE program in a sense. Maybe if it's not a position, it could be supplies.
I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but it's a lot of free money here, and I would like to see the schools get a portion of that if it's possible.
Sure. The, I think, so it's similar to most things, the program can exist already. What these funds are over and above, in addition to, we cannot supplant, typical of the normal grant language. And I think the thought was that Fresh Coalition was already existing, but we have not, since initial discussions, reached out to the school system. And so we'll certainly be happy to do so. We researched that between now and the November meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have heard great things come out of that family recovery court. I mean, wonderful stories have come out of that, and I think true progress is made there.
I agree.
So I support going forward with however you want to go about that, Brian.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Jamison, did you have anything?
I'll support going forward. Tell us that.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, you're, Mr. Tatum. So, the consensus, it appears, and tell me if I'm getting this wrong, is that the board's in consensus to have staff continue to move forward on developing the grant application, and you would be bringing something back to us in November that would trigger that grant application process, perhaps, with an approval?
Yes.
Am I getting that right?
We will do, we should have better numbers nailed down, and we'll reach out to the school system as well, just to make sure we're not overlapping in any of these program areas if they have a different need.
So you've got your consensus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. We appreciate it. Okay. Next, we'll go to the county administrators' report, and then we'll do the public hearings after these few matters here.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board this evening. Several things by way of upcoming events and updates. This coming Saturday is, I think it's the 52nd, I believe, anniversary event of the Blue Ridge Folk Life Festival. It's a wonderful event. Of course, our citizens, it celebrates our Blue Ridge heritage in so many ways on the campus of Firam College, and they do an excellent job at the Blue Ridge Institute, putting that on. And the campus of Firam College, they've been very active this week. I know Mr. Tatum certainly understands that, and seeing all the work that's being done. I know attendees from multiple states, Kevin, our tourism director, know it's one of our signature events in our shoulder season with out-of-town visitors. So the administration at Firam College has reached out to us regarding if there's anyone that may be interested in attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony on the opening of the event on Saturday. So look for your inbox, and we'll make sure Ms. Renick and we'll get that information out to you all if you haven't received that already. Lot of other events this month, very successful events. We know it's festival season, appreciate all the good work that Mr. Tosh does in tourism efforts. This upcoming also is the annual meeting of the Virginia Association of Counties, and that's coming up in November. And I believe a couple of the board members, two or three of the board members, are attending, and you'll see attachment number 12 in your booklets here. It does require that we have voting delegates there. One delegate per locality, and then there's an alternate delegate. And I do understand, Ms. Smith, of course, you are now a member of the Virginia Association of Counties Board of Directors, so I certainly understand you'll be at the event, and also likely present for that vote on the final day. And it's the vote on the VACO's legislative agenda is the primary thing. So we will just need to make sure, I think you are registered, I believe, Mr. Jamison, you may be registered for this event this year. So it may be between the two of you, who wants to be the voting delegate, and maybe the alternate delegate in the event that one of you could not attend.
I think Mr. Carter may be going?
Yeah, I haven't signed up yet, but I'm going to attend, but I'm fine with.
Hold it.
You'll do it?
Awesome. Okay. It was last year.
Okay. Marshall, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You okay with that?
Oh, I'm perfect. I'll do whatever you all want me to do. Chris, do you happen to know, and I've not asked this question, can I have a, as a delegate, can I have a vote if I'm on the board?
That's a great question. I do not know the answer to that. My guess is you would. I wouldn't see why you would not.
I've never had, asked that.
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't see why you would not. And in the event that you would not, I guess our alternate, we'll be there. We can, we can ask that. That's a great question.
All right. So do we need any action taken on that, Mr. Whitlow?
I don't think so. I think just the consensus of the board, if that's a consensus of the board, I'll make sure we get that back to the VACO office.
Do we have consensus on myself and Mr. Jamison for delegates? Mr. Carter, Mr. Mitchell, are you all okay with that? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Whitlow?
Yes, and Madam Vice Chair, that's all I have. And again, I appreciate all the good work of our FIRE EMS staff earlier this afternoon in today's meeting, and certainly our prayers are with the citizen there, and appreciate all the good work of the citizen they do every day. I can't, you know, I've been very reflective, as February comes closer, I'm reminded every day just how appreciative and how blessed we are as a county, just, you know, from our landfill staff to Parks and Recreation and our administrative staff, and I can't say enough great things. We have a great county.
You're going to miss us.
I'm going to miss it, yeah. Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitlow. Mr. Quinn, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay. Matters by supervisors. Mr. Quinn, I'll start with you, sir.
Thank you. So I had one overnight thought on the solar farm that we denied last time, and that was thinking about the county staff time that goes into preparation of these, and how they might have gone into this thinking that, well, this is easy, it's in an unzoned area, we think that this will easily be approved, but it wasn't, even though it met all the criteria that's been laid out by the Board of Supervisors. And so, having said that, I think it'd be interesting to put together a small subcommittee, almost like we did for the Smith Farm, of two or three people that voted to deny this, and have them look at the conditions for these solar farms, and decide how those conditions need to be changed, so that in the future, the group might be able to approve one of these. And I think by doing that, we would just avoid wasted time and a demotivated staff. They put a lot of time into things like this, and we don't want them working on things like this unless they have a reasonable chance for approval. And so I think the small group could come up with a set of criteria, or maybe not. Maybe they would realize, well, we should really have a moratorium on these. But either way, we're giving better guidance to the staff than the criteria that they have at hand that don't seem to be sufficient for passing these.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quinn. I would just offer that you've made a formal request. I want to make sure that we respond to that, and I would respond by saying, perhaps this needs to be deferred to Mr. Sandy, because we have a solar ordinance, we're in a Dillon's real state, and we also have unzoned districts. So if I'm getting you correct, Mr. Quinn, you want to inquire whether a subcommittee would be a desirable direction to take to try to bring into more clarity the unzoned districts with regard to utility solar?
I think it, I think it's to come up with new criteria for the benefit of the staff, so they would be evaluating future opportunities like this against a set of criteria that are likely to be a bit more rigorous than the ones that they're using.
But you're talking about in the unzoned areas?
Yeah, right now, yeah, it would be the unzoned areas, but maybe it applies broader than that. I'm thinking unzoned for the, currently, yes.
Well, I think if you're making the request, we've got the ordinance, and if it's okay with you. Mr. Sandy, would you be prepared to maybe give some guidance to Mr. Quinn and the board, give that some thought, or do you have any remarks this evening? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have any thoughts. I think what that would really require, I think, is us reviewing the policy and the comprehensive plan, if we're speaking of the non-zoned areas.
Yeah.
And so I guess that would be the question, is do you want to consider some changes to the comprehensive plan policy on solar and bring that back for consideration?
Yeah, because it's definitely comp plan first, zoning second. But its conformance with the comp plan is the 2232 threshold to meet.
Correct, in the non-zoned area.
In the non-zoned areas. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I think rather than waste any staff time on this right now, we wait till the first quarter of next year, because we're going to have a new board member up here, and the board could change. And me personally, I think that the easiest solution would be to take a consensus of the seated board, and if the consensus of the majority of the board is, we're not going to approve any more solar farms, just put a moratorium on it and be done with it, rather than spend any more time redoing a code or reworking on the code or any of that. That's just my thought.
Are there any other thoughts before I?
I agree with Mike.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, you agree?
Get a read of the board and go from there.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that after we have a newly seated board, 2026, this will appear on a work session or an agenda for us to make a decision and determination whether we review the comp plan for revision. That would certainly feed down, perhaps, to some of the zoning rewrite that we're in the current process of. Is that the consensus of the board? Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Quinn?
No, that's good. That's a good solution.
Okay. Mr. Tatum?
Just one thing. I had the opportunity this past Thursday night to attend the Small Business Appreciation Dinner over at the Burgland Center, and I just want to say that I felt like I was in the midst of rock stars. We're so fortunate to have in our economic development office Danny and Carly. I had people coming up, when I was standing in line to get my food, I had three different people coming up and asking me how they were doing and things. And, you know, and they talked about how long they had known Danny, and several of them knew Carly, and they were just very complimentary. And, you know, I just kind of stood, kind of like the proud daddy, proud papa, saying, yep, and they're ours. You know, so Danny, thank you for all the work that you do, and let, make sure Carly knows, we appreciate everything that y'all do for the county. And, you know, we were fortunate, we had some of our businesses, Home State Creamery, Virginia Furniture, both received acknowledgement and rewards, and just kind of made you proud of Franklin County. And, you know, that was businesses in our county going up against businesses in Roanoke and Bodatot and Montgomery County and Floyd County and places. And it was a proud moment for Franklin County. We were very well represented, and I just want to take my hat off to all of our staff, and especially Danny and Carly for what they do in economics, and of course to Chris and Brian and Steve and all the others. We're very fortunate with the staff we have, and we don't tell you enough how much we appreciate you, but we do.
That's well-stated, Mr. Tatum. We echo those thoughts as well. Okay, Mr. Jamison, I'll go down to your end.
Earlier last week, I came through, actually, I had a call from constituent, asked me if I'd been through some of you lately, and he said, I need to go. So anyway, I went down, and they were doing some reseeding spraying, and I'm not sure who was on the end of the hose, or anybody was on the end of the hose, but it made a mess. I contacted staff, they took care of it. Jeff got out there, he left a few minutes ago, I saw, but he got it taken care of, all but the thing going back this week, I think, and do the light poles and all. And I appreciate taking care of that quick.
Thank you for bringing that to everybody's attention. Do you have anything else, Mr. Jamison?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mitchell?
Happy Halloween. Get out and vote. Making babies trick-or-treating.
Outstanding, outstanding. Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'll echo what Tim says. We are, when I go to VACO and have lunch with other counties and I hear their problems, we have a fraction of the problems they have. And we have such a great economic development staff here, I can't say enough for Danny, and I still can't get over how we're going to borrow 20 million, but we're not going to have to pay back that full amount. It's a-
That's a feather in her hat, right?
Yeah, well, and our finance, and the whole county staff, plus the diligence of the board and being good responsibility with taxpayer money. And finally, I have a mom left that's 96, and recently, we've had a few bumps in the road, and I've had to call 911. And I really want to brag on our EMT staff and public safety and first responders, and I think we saw that in action here today. We are so fortunate to have the public safety staff we have, and they couldn't have been more helpful or more professional with my mom.
Thank you for sharing that.
And that's all I have.
Certainly echo that as well. The only thing that I have, gentlemen, Mr. Whitlow, I just have an inquiry with regard to, last year, we took up establishment of the lifetime dog license on June 18th, 2024. And I didn't notice this at the time, but I'd like to know what the $15 kennel fee is on this, because there's a $10, well, there's a total fee, but there's $15 in there for kennel. What in the world are citizens paying $15 for a kennel fee for?
Ms. Smith, we can certainly look into that. I think that was not a part of last year's update.
Yeah, it was.
It was previous, that portion of the ordinance, we went back and checked, I think Ms. Renick went back and checked, and that was already existing way back from-
It was.
Yeah, from the 2000s or the late 1990s. But we certainly can look into that. But that, that had no reflection last year when the board took that previous action.
I would just like to know if we're still charging it, and if we are, why? And if there's no good reason, from my perspective, I don't think our citizens should be paying an arper fee.
Yeah, we can look into that. I'm not sure, Ms. Smith, I do not recall that being charged, you know, in conversations with finance staff or the treasurer's office. It was kind of news to us that that was on the books, but it, last year's action from the board had nothing to do with that. It was a previous, it's archaic, but to your point, the fact that it is archaic, if it doesn't need to be there, we can bring some information back to you.
Yeah, I had a citizen call me that paid it this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and was wondering what in the world. The only other thing I have is, I've had an at-length discussion with Senator Stanley last week regarding our legislative priorities. And I just want to let you all know that he remains highly supportive. He carried a bill last year for us to do a text amendment relative to transportation and taking the code section of Virginia where there's a $25 million ceiling on allocation statewide, and we had asked that it be raised to 50 million. And it did not get passed last year. Senator Stanley remains highly supportive of taking that up again, and I told him we were very appreciative of that. He felt that was the path of least resistance, given our declining VDOT revenues, but to get a text amendment, per se. I communicated on your behalf that we understand that our autonomy over solar, utility solar, continues to be threatened. Of course, a lot of this will be predicated on the election in a couple of weeks. But irrespective of that, this issue is not going away in any short term, and we want to maintain our autonomy. That's been very clear to me. VACO is very clear about that as well. And also, Senator Stanley is standing fully behind continually, as you know, the House and Senate did, for the 1%-
did, for the 1% sales tax allocation if they're with a referendum where that money would be restricted to school renovation and school building. And so Senator Stanley is, you know, it was passed by the House and Senate, and the governors vetoed it, I believe, twice. So he's going to keep that issue hot and a priority on our behalf. So I just wanted to report those things out to you. So that's all I have at the moment. All right, so we are going to move on. We have a public hearing scheduled for this evening. We have one public hearing. It is the abandonment of Farren Park Road, West Franklin. It's attachment 13 in your binder. And I would ask Ms. Cooper if you're already there.
Yes.
If you would give us an overview, please.
Sure. Excuse me. Yes, we're here to talk about a partial abandonment of West Franklin Drive. It's just a portion of it. We'll go into more detail. I'll even have a diagram to show you so you'll know what part that you are abandoning. The Friends of Farren Park has asked for this request, and we do have Mr. Saunders here, and he'll give a brief presentation after mine. Basically, we started out, VDOT staff and planning staff started talking to Mr. Saunders for, he's the representative for Friends of Farren Park Incorporated, about abandoning a portion of Route 1058, which is West Franklin Drive, which is the road that goes up to the Farren Park. We, the proposed abandonment would be approximately .22 miles. One reason why we're not requesting to abandon the whole road is there is a property owner that has a lot that fronts on both Route 40 and West Franklin, but they also have an interior lot that just faces on West Franklin Drive. So they're in support. They do have some questions and they do have some concerns. And there was an email that was distributed to you all. So we decided, VDOT staff, Mr. Saunders, and myself decided that maybe it would be better just to do a portion of this road. As you know, they own two parcels. Basically, Mr. Saunders advised staff that the park is utilizes this road for many events because it's one of the largest cleared areas of the park's property. As you all well know, the park is very wooded. The abandonment would allow their organization to control and maintain this road and use it for events without having to obtain permitting from VDOT. If they have an event on a state maintained road, each time you have that event, you have to get a permit from VDOT to do it. And I think there is a small, or there is a fee that goes along with that. The organization has submitted a road maintenance agreement. It was in your pocket. It has been reviewed by our county attorney's office. The entire road would still be open to the public. However, the portion that we're requesting to be abandoned would not be maintained by VDOT anymore. The Friends of Farren Park Incorporated would be the ones to maintain it. VDOT would continue to maintain approximately .07 miles of the road. And this would start at the intersection of Route 40 and go up to a small area past the property that I'm going to show you on the map. VDOT and the Friends of Farren Park or Mr. Saunders, they've been in discussion about a turnaround at the proposed ends of state maintenance that should be finalized and constructed after the approval of the abandonment by the county or VDOT, the county and VDOT. The construction of this turnaround would be, the cost associated with it would be the responsibility of Friends of Farren Park Incorporated. VDOT nor the county would be responsible for any of those funds. VDOT will also be the agency to determine at what point the turnaround turnabout should be constructed. And also, there has been some questions if the proposed abandonment, if there would be a gate where the state maintenance ends. I don't think that that has been determined. Any associated costs with that would be Farren, Friends of Farren Park. And if for some reason a new plat or something, the responsibility of the right of way, that would also be at their cost. Just a brief discussion, basically, this portion that we would be asking for an abandonment, no public necessity is expected for park events, except, you know, obviously, the public coming on it to access the park, and no longer necessary to be part of the state highway system. Friends of Farren Park have supplied, like I said, a road maintenance agreement. It would have to be recorded in the clerk of court's office after the abandonment is approved by both you, the board supervisors by resolution, and by VDOT's Salem District. There's a process that has to go through after y'all's decision is made. Basically, all this is done under Section 33.2-909 of the county code that you are, you have to determine if the road is warranted by no public necessity is served and current safety and welfare of the public is the best served. This is what I wanted to show you, and I'm glad that y'all have screens. Obviously, this is Route 40 here. This is the portion that would stay into the state system. So the turnaround would have to be done somewhere in this area, which is good, because the Friends of Farren Park own both of these lots. This is the property that has frontage that I was talking about on 40 and West Franklin. This is their interior lot. So basically, it would be the yellowed, highlighted portion that you are voting on to be closed this evening, or to be abandoned, not closed, excuse me, abandoned. So your staff respectively request by resolution that you approve this abandonment for approximately .22 miles in accordance with the Section 33.2909 of the code. Basically, I'm here to answer any questions. It's been a long time since you've had an abandonment in front of you, but actually, I have two that I'm working on. So you'll be seeing this again for other roads soon. Mr. Saunders, like I said, is here just to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Saunders, did you want to offer any information for presentation purposes? Or do you just want to answer questions?
I'm just here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Lisa, go back to that map you had there. Where is the gate going?
There will not be a gate. Sorry, that was a discussion that was had, and the board doesn't want to put any gate. They want it to remain open to the public.
They said it's still going to be open to the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Cooper?
Did changing the part of the road that was going to be abandoned, did that satisfy the folks from this email?
It did. I mean, they wanted that to be kept open. I know the person that sent an email, I think they sent a photograph, and I'm looking for their email. They did have some questions at the bottom of their email. I don't know if y'all had a chance.
Is that Bill in Monocle I'm suing?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I spoke with them at great length about this whole process because, again, trying to be good neighbors as much as we can. So their main concern was if we abandoned the entirety of the road, they were concerned it would affect their property value. So that's why we've kind of moved where we're going to abandon it up to the corner of their property. So all that maintain is state maintained, and it doesn't have any effect on them. So that was their biggest concern when I discussed it with them. I don't know if there were any other issues that I could address.
Yeah, they did have some. I mean, obviously, because the park is going to be open, there's more traffic, and they're concerned about where people are going to park. I think now they probably, some of them, some people probably park on this lot.
Well, so there are a couple of different places, and depending on what the purpose that somebody is. So we have a trailhead actually at the very end that has a parking lot for, I think, 16 cars now. There is a plan for putting gravel along one side of the road to have additional parking alongside the road, like to where people can actually pull off and park. Our goal is to make this to where it's completely safe for as many people as possible. The plan is to make it as user friendly as possible. We want to, our key safety, our key, I'm sorry, it's been a very long day. Our key thing is people's safety. That's our biggest focus, is making sure the kids that come there, the adults that come there, the older folks that come there are safe, have a place to be, they're not walking across traffic. One of the things we'd certainly like to do is put some speed limit signs up because people come flying up there. I'm probably guilty of that myself sometimes, too. But yeah, our main focus is to keep people safe.
I know there was something that she was asking about speed bumps being installed either on the public or the private road. I mean, obviously
Fine with that.
Speed bumps on the private portion would be a lot easier. The public portion, I've been in front of this board a lot. We were just talking about a neighborhood that at one point wanted speed bumps. So on the state main paint part, that would be a little different to be able, but it would be up to Friends of Farren Park if they wanted to put speed bumps on the others.
Well, and if we had access to the funding, we would certainly put it in. Because again, that's been one of the issues that we've dealt with, is just people fly up there. We've had folks do donuts in the turnaround and all kinds, just people are people, so.
She was concerned about people parking on the state maintained portion of the road. I mean, there were, you're not supposed to park on a state maintained road. And if someone would call in the Virginia State Police, and I think Friends of Farren, they can make sure that people aren't parking on the state portion of the maintain, the state maintained portion that's left.
We have a large parking lot there, yet people still park there. I do not know.
So there are remedies to get there. The one concern is, she said, if Farren Park or Farren Ford or Friends of Farren are not successful in the long term, is there process in place for the road to revert back to the state maintenance? There would be. It depends on if Friends of Farren Park would ever sell it.
Don't plan on going there.
There's, there is always the possibility. It could be brought into the state system. It would just have to be brought up to state standards. And that would be, the cost would be up to the developer that would purchase the property. So there is, that was some of her main concerns. And then, like you, some of the speeding up the road. Her mother lives with her and gets kind of anxious and some of the extra noise. I think with the property being vacant for so long, you know, there is going to be some growing pains. But I think, you know, the park up and running.
She also suffers from dementia. We've had a couple of times where she's just wandered over and we kind of guide back. That's all we can do.
But I don't know if you all have any other questions. Those were the bold ones that I wanted. I made sure I had answers for you this evening.
Mr. Jamison, did that answer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, did you have any questions? Mr. Carter?
I just have one question. Are you all, I'm sorry, are you all long term, are you planning on having camping in there that involves like motorhomes?
We're working on getting the engineered plan together so we get water and sewer up there. Right now, it's just
Well, and it's your parking, do what you want to. But I'm just thinking about wear and tear on that road, down the road. If you take it out of the state system, then you all are going to be responsible for fixing that.
If we get RVs in there, we'll have enough offset to cover it. So, yep. And it'll get done quicker than VDOT does. No offense to
Mr. Tatum, did you have anything?
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
I have a couple. So Lisa, you mentioned if they abandoned it now and then later decided they wanted to bring it back under VDOT control, that it would have to be brought up to state standards. However, I assume it's already at state standards now because it's a VDOT road, right?
Yes, it's now considered at state standards. If they would want to bring it back, VDOT would do a punch list of the road, and there could be improvements that they possibly could require that would have to be done.
I would think too, if we installed speed bumps or something like that, those would have to be done to code. And everything we've done, we've tried to follow code as much as possible.
They would probably want them removed. It would be back to the state system. But and so whatever damage would have to be. But I'm sure the way that it's done now, I'm sure there would be a punch list done by the residency, and it would be given to you or the developer, whoever was going to be reverting it back.
Okay. And then the shape of the turnaround, would it be roughly like the cul-de-sac that you have at the top? Is that what you envisioned is another kind of?
So currently, if you look above, north of the bottom parcel there that we own, that is actually a VDOT right of way currently, because at one point in time, there was a subdivision planned for there. That is still, it hasn't been abandoned either. So that is still technically a 30-foot right of way. That conforms to the Virginia regulations on a T turnaround, a T-style turnaround. And I've spoken with Lisa Lewis about that would be the construction we would pursue.
Oh, so you're more thinking a T than a bubble like you have at the top, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so all of that turnaround, the T turnaround, would be on your property? None of it will be on this
That's correct, yep.
The property, the private property below that, right?
It would, it would use the existing right of way, the 30-foot right of way that VDOT has there in that little, that little band north of the bottom property.
It's this right here.
Yep, it's that, that little band there.
Does anybody know how to zoom in?
Would there be, would there be an end of state maintenance sign? Uh, yes, ma'am. They usually do put up end of state maintenance. There we go. Thank you.
Oh, come on you.
This 30-foot right of way right here.
I see. And then, so once you agree with VDOT on what the turnaround looks like, Friends of Farren are paying for the improvement, whatever is required?
Yeah, it'll be constructed. Again, we have to work all those details out. And I told Lisa that we can leave that open if they need to use it for, like, right now, there's a lot of, like, when there are ice storms, a lot of the vehicles, like VDOT vehicles and stuff are staged on that road. So again, it's going to stay open and available for them. I think the main concern is things like snow clearing and things like that, in which case they can either use, we can construct one specifically to their, to meet their needs, or they can utilize the turnaround that's already there in the farmer's market area, that bottom lot.
Yeah, so you're taking over snow clearing also then for that road?
Yep. We have to do it so often here in Virginia.
Okay.
You just caused us to have a lot of snow this year.
Oh, wow.
So thank you all very much for indulging us. Excuse me. So this is the time and date that we will open up the public hearing on this matter. I will read the following notice. We have reached the time set aside for public comment. Public comment gives citizens
That's for later.
Huh?
That's for later.
That's public comment, which I'm going to call it.
Thank you.
I was going to say, can you vote on?
Boy, am I a tired little puppy today.
Been a long day.
Thank y'all for keeping me straight. I'm
Madam Vice Chair, I have one more question.
Please, please.
Lisa, you remember I came to you a while back and we were talking about one of these?
Yes.
There was an abandonment in my district.
Yes.
And I think this is exactly what that was about. That turnaround that was supposed to go in for that one was never completed.
And that I can check on for you.
Down there off 890 down there at
Right, Atkins Road.
Atkins. So I'm wondering if, I don't doubt that Mr. Saunders is going to do what they're saying they're going to do. But so, so VDOT has a stretch of road that's two tenths of a mile. I would like to see some kind of language to ensure that that turnaround is what those VDOT trucks need, because they're going to have to go in there and scrape the snow on two tenths of a mile of road. We need to ensure that they're going to have what they need to turn around.
I was, that's a great point.
And that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be on just a
I believe the, there is a specific requirement on a T turnaround in VDOT
Regulations? And that's what I asked Lisa. I was like, this is what we're going to use. Is this okay? Not this Lisa, the other Lisa. So that's the construction. I think it gives 30 or 40 feet to turn around.
And who's responsible for building that?
So it's apparently going to rely on, or it's going to be on ours. So we're going to have to clear it. We're going to have to level it. We're going to have to put gravel down because it'll just be a gravel turnaround. But she said
And what's the timeline on that?
We'll have to hash everything out with Lisa.
The resolution, there is a part in here, whereas the turnaround at the end of state maintenance shall be constructed by Friends of Farren Park Incorporated in a timeframe required by the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Yeah, so Lisa will give us the timeline, and we'll just have to comply with it. And again, we've got the volunteers to do it. I just
To what timeline are you going to give them, Lisa?
From Lisa.
I, Lisa Lewis.
Lisa, VDOT Lisa.
Yep, VDOT Lisa.
I mean, we can, we can voice, I mean, if the board, I'm going to need Mr. Quinn's help on this. In this resolution, if, I don't know if the board could put a time limit of when the turnaround had to be in place?
What would your pleasure be? Like, what
Oh, I don't have a pleasure. I just know it turned into a problem when one down there. I don't doubt that you guys are going to do it.
Well, like I said, there's also the turnaround area in the, yeah, just a little bit south of that is where the
I think if it was done before winter weather was here, would be perfectly acceptable, in my humble opinion.
You're killing me, man. You're killing me.
Mr. Quinn, did you Mr. Quinn, did you have anything to weigh in on?
There, in the, I think in the statute, there are some provisions that you can use. But I think it's a different statute.
Than the one that, for the abandonment?
Involves, I don't want to say this, approving it. Sort of tentatively until the rest of everything else has been done. We could look at that as perhaps a way to address it, so that it gets closed, but we don't do anything else with regard to getting it closed until.
I can't touch the VDOT road until it's out of VDOT's hands. So, I can't build anything on it or do anything that, that.
He is right about that. It would have to be abandoned. I mean, if we put a time period in the resolution, is that legal and binding? I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Pardon me?
What happens if it isn't done? I mean, I question you.
Well, and my other question is, what if Lisa feels that the turnaround at the farmer's market is suitable? Because again, the regulation in Virginia's code says a 40-foot minimum to the turnaround. Technically, if they turn around in the farmer's mark, farmer's market lot, that meets that T-turnaround.
So, is the, once it's abandoned, then the ownership is going to go to people who own the land around?
Right. What will happen is there's a form of, once the board makes their decision, the resolution will be sent to the residency. Then there is a form for the abandonment that's sent to the Salem District. And I'm not sure exactly who approves it. I do not think it goes to the CTV. I think it just goes to the Salem District. Somebody, traffic, somebody approves it, doesn't approve it, and then it, you know, will be notified that it is officially abandoned. And at that time is when the road maintenance agreement will have to be recorded, and I will make sure that they record it. And then, at that time, the turnaround should be, there should be.
The turnaround will have to be at the end of state maintenance. It can't be down there on the other end.
Technically, the code says that it's a 40-foot minimum to the turnaround. That basically means enough area for them to pull up and then back up. But again, Lisa and I haven't hashed that out, but she said that that would meet code. So, using the existing 30-foot right-of-way there would meet code, because it's a 40.4 feet to that turnaround.
So, if VDOT, like wherever they put the turnaround, as long as they approve it dealing with their state road, then, you know, we would be fine. But I can see your concern.
I have the same exact problem down there, and I have people coming to me wanting to know why the turnaround was never done.
Well, and of course, that's another subject. I have mentioned that to VDOT about that certain turnaround.
I can show you what the code is for that.
I'm not interested in the code. I'm just.
He's, I know what Mr. Mitchell wants. He wants to make sure that this one is built sooner than the one in his district.
Yes, because I doubt the one in my district will ever be built.
So, Mr. Mitchell, what I would maybe suggest is that you offer up an expectation that you would like implied during the VDOT discussion. I don't know if that requires action of the board or not, but do you have an idea of what you would like implied on behalf of the board for this application?
My thought is this person sent in this email, and they want that part of the road still. They want the snow scraped, they want downed trees pushed out of it and whatnot. And in order for them to do that, they have to have a turnaround for those trucks, just like the one in my district, where those trucks go down there on the part that is maintained, but they get to the end, and there's nowhere to go.
Gotcha.
And I don't want this to be the same situation.
Well, see, and on Nature Zone Road, there's actually the abandoned, the road stops, and then there's a turnaround another 100 feet. To that point, they could still use the cul-de-sac.
Sure. If it's still open, then.
And that, again, the plan is to leave it open. It's a public park.
I understand.
It would make no sense to gate it off.
Do you want to leave any contribution to the discussion?
I would put a timeline on it that is reasonable for them to obtain.
Okay.
I don't want to put them in a jam. If it's reasonable for them, it's good with me.
Just to continue, I mean, this is, of course, on the record with VDOT continuing discussions. Make sure that Mr. Mitchell's concerns are heard and reflected with VDOT discussions. Is that fair enough, Mr. Mitchell?
And I'm always involved in the emails, so I can always report back to the board.
I can coordinate with Lisa as well and see what her preference would be, what she would like done and how she would like it done.
Okay.
It comes down to them to begin with.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm going to try this one more time. I am going to open the public hearing on this matter. Madam Clerk, are there any individuals signed up to speak?
Laverne Tiggle.
Ms. Tiggle?
I'm not speaking on what was just presented, so I don't know.
You're not speaking on this application?
No.
So, you're just here to speak on, for public comment? That'll be in a few minutes. Sorry, I probably added to your confusion. Okay, did you have anybody for this application?
That's the only name I have.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what are your wishes on this application this evening? Or do you have any further questions or inquiries or comments to make?
I'm prepared to make a motion when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Yes, please.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the abandonment of approximately .22 miles of Route 1058, West Franklin Drive, to no longer be part of the VDOT secondary system of state highways by resolution under Section 33.2-909 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And so, Ms., Madam Clerk, we'll need a roll call vote on this, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson is absent for the vote.
Okay, so, as far as I know, staff, that concludes any need for public hearings, anything to come before the board's seat. Okay, very good. Okay, so, we have reached this time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the border county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question-and-answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone signed up to speak? We'll do this take two, right, Ms. Tiggle? If you would come and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Laverne Tiggle, 315 Booker T. Washington Highway, Rocky Mount, Virginia. I stand before you this evening on behalf of the staff and the volunteers of Heavenly Manor. Heavenly Manor is a food pantry located at 2233 South Main Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia. Citizens from the county come once per month on Mondays to shop for food for their families. Services occur on Mondays starting at 10:00 a.m. and ending at 5:00 p.m. The average number of recipients has been between 100 and 120 customers each Monday during the month. We anticipate a major increase of the number of persons visiting with Heavenly Manor. Yesterday, the Franklin County Department of Social Services posted on Facebook that, quote, "Due to the government shutdown and based on information we have available at this time, there will be no issuance of SNAP benefits effective November 1st nationwide. In Franklin County, this will impact over 6,000 individuals," end of quote. This evening, we and two other persons who volunteer at the heavenly manor are present and stand before you with a plea that there be something done proactively to provide safety in the area on Mondays in the 2233 South Main Street area. Safety features that could include the placement of blinking lights to slow down, flares, warning of a congested area, or more monitoring of the area by the sheriff's department. I have spoken with investigator Huffman of the Franklin County Sheriff's Department with our concern. We are concerned that if something isn't done to address this issue, there will be serious injuries or even death to innocent human beings who volunteer and those who receive services. We are thankful for the help of the Franklin County Sheriff's Department that they provide to us, but we feel that we can do better in this effort by placing warning indicators to travelers in this area each Monday. People fly up and down the area where Heavenly Manor is. A quote by author J.R.R. Tolkien says, and I quote, "If by my life or death I can protect you, I will," unquote. It is my hope that you, our representatives, will converse with the powers that be to ensure you do your part in helping people safely be, in helping provide safety precautions to the traffic flow area at 2233 South Main Street.
Thank you, Ms. Tiggle. We appreciate your remarks. Madam Clerk? That's all I have.
Before you go any further, just can you check with the sheriff and check with VDOT and see if they can help Heavenly Manor out with that? I think they have the signs, and he can have some, help them out.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum.
And also, any other way we might can help them with that. That was weighing on my mind today, and Heavenly Manor would be a great place to help with that monetarily or whatever we need to do. I would love an update, Chris, if someone, staff, could reach out to them and find out if there's anything they need.
Thank you, Ms. Tiggle. We appreciate it very much. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board that didn't sign up? You're more than welcome to approach. Okay, all right, very good. So, we will be closing public comment. Colleagues, is there anything else to come before us tonight that you would like to bring? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Are we adjourning not, so there will be no meeting Thursday? There will be no meeting or work session Thursday? So, we will be adjourning to our November meeting. On what date?
Eighteenth.
On November 18th. Thank you all so much.